Call to order, January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is our work-study, first one of the year. Welcome, everyone. Click, please call the roll.
Councilmember Greer, here. Councilmember Dickinson, here. Councilmember Heppertly, here. Councilmember Schumacher, present. Vice Mayor Hunt, present. Mayor Palguda, here. We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. First up, new council member oath, Ms. Lucy Leva. Judge, welcome down, Ms. Leva.
You'll talk into there. You ready?
Ready.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lucy Leva, I, Lucy Leva, do solemnly affirm, do solemnly affirm, that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution, of the United States, of the United States, and the Constitution and laws, and the Constitution and laws, of the state of Arizona, of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the same, to the same, and defend them against all enemies, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially, and that I will faithfully and impartially, discharge the duties, discharge the duties, of the office of, of the office of, Prescott Valley Town Council Member, Prescott Valley Town Council Member, according to the best of my ability, according to the best of my abilities, so I do affirm, so I do affirm. Congratulations.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Your seat awaits you. Well, Councilwoman Leva is working her way up to the, her seat. I would like to welcome Simpo for their update. Mr. Gallego.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Special congratulations to Councilmember Leva. Welcome. So it's been a year since I've been here to give you an annual update. I brought some staff with me that'll highlight some of our projects, so it won't just be me talking today, but just to give a little bit of background, Simpo's vision is to promote and maintain a regional coordinated transportation system for the safe and efficient movement of people, goods, and services. Again, the town of Prescott Valley is a part of Simpo, and as such, we are a regional organization, and our mission statement is to use regional leadership in planning and promoting a comprehensive multimodal transportation system. I put a couple of words on this vision and mission in bold, just to highlight today that, again, when I think of Simpo, hopefully when you think of it too, is it's, we exercise our leadership. We are a planning organization, working on your behalf, but one of the great benefits that you receive is leadership as the regional, as the regional entity. Just a little bit of trivia, for some of you know, so for some of you, you're familiar with this, for some of you that are new, maybe this is good trivia to have. An MPO or Metropolitan Planning Organization is established, first and foremost, by the United States Census, that's done every ten years. When the Census designates an area that is urbanized to fifty thousand people or greater, that basically triggers what an MPO begins to be established. A few years later, in two thousand and three, the Arizona Governor established a central Yavapai MPO. So this is our twenty-year anniversary, not quite old enough to drink yet, but old enough to, to be leaders in the community. So we have a intergovernmental, government agreement with the town of Prescott Valley, Prescott, Chino Valley, Dewey, Humboldt, Yavapai County, and Simpo, which, again, further establishes our existence. Our area is relatively small in a large county, but as you can see that I listed the population, we have about sixty percent of the population of Yavapai County in our region, even though the, the geography is relatively small. We do have a real consensus, or a real focused area of, of the population. I put this slide in here to show you our executive board, that, again, you are incredibly well-represented for the region. In particular, your mayor sits on the Simpo board. He's just finished his term for the last two years as our chairman, so we're grateful for his experience and time. You can also see that we also have two other mayors, one from Prescott, one from Dewey, Humboldt. This year, we have Supervisor Craig Brown, who is the chairman. I want to say he's just hit his ten-year mark with Simpo. I think I've been, I started about nine years ago, he started ten. So, again, just a wealth of, of real experience and, and leadership on this particular board. To go ahead and take it one step further, again, to show our, our connection with the town of Prescott Valley, you are further represented and participant with Technical Advisory Committee. Formerly, it was Norm Davis as the Public Works Director, it is currently Gilbert Davidson, your town manager, and I won't go down the list, but, again, this is up here to illustrate how closely we work with not only your legislative leadership, but really your staff, so that we cooperate together. I just have two more slides, and I'm going to turn it over to staff to give you a highlight on a few other projects. One of the things that Simpo has taken the lead on, on behalf of the region, is to approach the state legislature for money, on your behalf, on our behalf as a region. Last year, we were incredibly successful, along with the town of Prescott Valley, to get about ten point eight million dollars. Really want to send a very special thanks to Senator Phan, Representative Wynn, and Burgess. They were leaders in that, but they were leaders because you asked them to, because we asked them to. You can see the projects I put in bold, again, that we, that I believe are, are direct benefits to the town of Prescott Valley. Obviously, the pavement preservation on sixty-nine in Prescott Valley, I'm sure you've talked about that before, but maybe you're not as familiar with. We're going to add an additional eastbound on Ram Lane at the State Route eighty-nine, eighty-nine A intersection, that'll bring the traffic that's coming into Prescott Valley, will reduce some of that congestion as they get on to eighty-nine A. Fast forward to this year, we're going to be asking, since the economy's looking a bit promising, and we have some incredible support, we're going to almost triple our request from last year. We're going to ask for twenty-eight point three million dollars. Basically, two projects that I've recommended to the Simpo Executive Board, and they have approved. One of them being in bold is the Glassford Hill widening. So we're going to ask the state legislature to support one-time funding to give you about ten million dollars to go ahead and widen Glassford Hill Road between eighty-nine and Long Look Drive. So, you know, not an easy conversation that Mayor Palguda and I have had with the board, because clearly I showed you the board members, I showed you the TAC members, they would like those dollars in their backyard, if you will, but in working as a regional organization, we see the need, we know where that is. So with all that said, at the bottom, I'm encouraging, I'm very encouraged by the conversations that I've had with Senator Bennett, Representative Wynn, and Representative Bliss, but you all participate in the twists and turns of politics, so they've, so far, made very good on making those steps forward, but please join us, obviously, in talking with them and visiting with them, but I've had nothing but support from them. Just recently, I was speaking with Representative Bliss, and she was already working on the paperwork for the bill, so as far as I'm concerned, it looks incredibly positive. Here's my last slide. We've just been awarded by working with Senator Mark Kelly and his office, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the federal budget that was just approved, I think about a week ago. This money's going to go to help us with the design process for widening State Route eighty-nine between, eighty-nine A between eighty-nine and Glassford Hill. It's currently a four-lane highway, it needs to go to six lanes. Simpo recognizes the growth and the development in that region, in that area, for Prescott Valley, Prescott and surrounding, so just a special thank you to, excuse me, to Senator Kelly and his office. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to staff to give you a highlight on a few other projects, and then I'll come back up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Ms. Post.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Lindsay Post, and I'm a, pardon me, I got it from Vinnie just now. I'm a planner at Simpo and the project manager of several projects, a couple of which I'd like to highlight for you today, and, of course, we'll start with the Sun Dog Connector, which is on your screen now. The Sun Dog Design Concept Report Project is an eighteen-month project. This is a conceptual design of a three-point-five-mile east-west corridor along Glassford Hill, behind Yavapai Hills, very close to Diamond Valley. It consists of land in Prescott, Prescott Valley, and the county, and this is not a new idea, especially if you're been in the area since at least two thousand, you know that we've been driving by a constructed terminus point, which is, wasn't built in anticipation of committing to the construction of the Sun Dog Connector Corridor. If built, this corridor could help relieve traffic on SR sixty-nine to the additional twelve hundred dwelling units to be built in Yavapai Hills and Storm Ranch. This route will also help drive economic development, especially as a Sun Dog Connector would empty out directly into Prescott Valley's business district. Such a corridor would help, also help address resiliency in our region. Resiliency is going to be a big buzzword with the new infrastructure bill. It's a, a, a big push with our, the current administration, so our area is currently recognized as a transportation disadvantaged area by the U.S. Census, which means that we are not resilient, that in case of natural disaster accidents, there's not a lot of places for us to go, we're usually just stuck right there on the highway, so that's also a benefit of this project. Simpo and our selected consultant, Kittleson, kicked off the SR sixty-nine urbanized master corridor plan. This will be a twelve-month project designed to commence right at the same time as Sun Dog Connector is designed to commence. The SR sixty-nine study area consists of fifteen miles of corridor, five miles of which is in Prescott Valley. The purpose of this study is to provide a segmented prioritized list of sections, ready for implementation of the preferred solution. And one note I wanted to highlight here is, as we all know, the, the one mile of widening set to begin this quarter has taken our area about ten years and about thirteen million dollars just to get one mile of this, of that section widened, so this is a huge push for us, and it's important to make sure that we prioritize our needs. To further illustrate how Simpo's work benefits the region and Prescott Valley, this slide shows the latest HSIP projects awarded in our, awarded in our region. Here, Simpo spent twenty thousand dollars in working with a consultant to help make our applications more competitive, and that twenty thousand dollars turned and leveraged us three point two million dollars in funding for our local projects that you can see listed here. And finally, our regional transportation plan is a long-range planning document that looks out about twenty-five years, it looks out exactly twenty-five years into the future. It's updated every five years to, to ensure it remains a valuable working document, and it's developed with our member agencies' goals and objectives in mind, so we make sure to work closely with you all while you're developing your general plans and your capital improvement plans, and try to capture your goals in our regional transportation plan. The update will begin in the next couple of years for the, the next twenty-five-year lookout. So from here, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Bryn, who will talk a little bit more about that and more. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, Ms. Stotler.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Great to be with you this afternoon. I'm Bryn Stotler, I'm a planner with Simpo. Let me advance the slide. So Lindsay referenced our regional transportation plan, that truly is the backbone of the work that Simpo does, it is the bible we work off of for five-year periods, and it does recap all of the transportation priorities for the region. Another very important plan that we routinely update, however, is our safety plan. Currently, we're in an update process with NACOG and with Metro Plan of Flagstaff. Metro Plan is the MPO in the Flagstaff area. Our three agencies are involved with Greenlight Transportation Engineering, who is drilling down on all of the safety data in our region from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-one. You can see that this table that we have shown really represents more of the broad-brush metrics that, that they're looking at in the safety plan. Of course, we're looking at fatal accidents, we want to reduce that, any numbers that we have in that column to zero, that is a statewide goal of the Arizona Department of Transportation, and by extension, a goal of Simpo's, and all of our jurisdictions, I'm sure, share that sentiment. But you'll see that the other metrics are serious injury accidents, minor injury accidents, and then the possible injury and other minor crashes. So what we're really looking for here is to look for hotspots in our regional map, and the, the completed plan will have those types of maps to identify where mitigations may be developed, so that we can reduce crashes in areas where they're happening more frequently. To drill down on a little bit further on Prescott Valley's metrics, you'll see, again, I mentioned that the study period is seventeen to twenty-one. Prescott Valley's percentage of total crashes out of the eighty-two fifty-six is twenty-nine percent, twenty-three hundred and ninety-one crashes. Percentage of total fatalities of the fifty-six fatalities, fourteen occurred in Prescott Valley, that's twenty-five percent. And then in total serious injury accidents of the sixty-eight reported, twenty-six percent, or of the number reported, sixty-eight occurred in Prescott Valley for twenty-six percent of that total. As you can see, these, these numbers really tell a story, so that we can bring the planning, the data sets to your jurisdictions, and the planning can begin at your level to do critical traffic planning and produce mitigations to reduce these numbers. Another transportation plan that we're getting ready to kick off, and we're quite excited about it, is an active transportation plan. Prescott Valley's going to play a big role in this one. You guys are in the process of updating sidewalks and pedestrian crosswalks in your town, and this plan will focus on bicycle and pedestrian transportation primarily, but also will look at transit connections, will look at trail access, and just all forms of active transportation. We're even going to have a segment on our electronic devices that are under development and that many people are now starting to use in active transportation. But we really want to take a very finite look at where people are going, how they're getting there, and how can we make those connections more effective and safer and easier. One of the components of the plan is also school safety, getting families with children to school safely, getting children who are within walking distance of their school campuses to school safely, so we're really looking at the existing facilities around school campuses and opportunities to improve those facilities, so that every child is getting to school more safely. Here's where Prescott Valley gets a huge congratulations. The launch of Yava Line has been nothing less than an inspiration to the region, and for those of us working in transportation, we're really geeked out about it, just to be completely candid. Yava Line's ridership numbers are excellent, we're seeing rides, a full twenty-five percent of rides being taken to and from employment, that's what we love to see in a microtransit system. So you guys are really to be commended for taking the leap and actually receiving that CARES Act funding, so that we can get a proof of concept going about this microtransit system, and I think we're well on our way. Of course, we have other public transportation in the region, you all probably recognize the buses of Yavapai Regional Transit, which is a Chino Valley-based fixed route service that also does travel to Prescott and Prescott Valley, has great value to the region and, and in particular, to the town of Chino Valley. And then we have our human services transportation providers, New Horizons is definitely in the forefront of that group, but we also have organizations like People Who Care, Polara Health, the VA Medical Center, the Arizona Coalition for Veterans. We have many organizations that are working in the movement of people with disabilities, the elderly, and our veteran population, so we really want to continue to support these, this network of critical transportation providers, and that's part of our role here at Simpo. With that, we want to call attention to the fact that we have a newsletter that we are launching this quarter, and that will be in your inboxes shortly, and with that, I'll turn it over to Vinnie for our question-and-answer period. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Bryn. Just, if I can, Mr. Mayor, just two closing comments, and then I'll turn it over to you for questions. I almost felt as though I was being set up when I sat down, Representative Wynn was calling me, and I thought, well, is he watching the council meeting? And I saw his text, he's, he's, again, working on the language for Glassford Hill, so positive news that, again, this is happening. I'll visit with him when I leave the meeting, but please, let's keep this, obviously, it's important to the town of Prescott Valley, that ten million dollars possible, but on behalf of the region, that we just remain focused, that this is beneficial to the entire region. And then, just in closing, I, I looked at the last two years and going into this year, we're sitting around thirteen studies that, some of them we referenced, some we didn't, that sits around two point six million dollars' worth of studies, and I want to close you with this, that those two point six million dollar investment of studies is what staff just said. We're not, we, we do not create studies to put on the shelf and gather dust. My biggest mission and my predecessors is that the studies that we, that Simpo works on leads to implementation, leads to construction, leads to federal dollars. So Lindsay showed you one graphic that, that we used twenty thousand dollars of Simpo dollars to bring in three point two million, and there's, there's a number of, of examples of that, but I just want you to recognize today, please, that, again, that two point six million, Prescott Valley is a major, major part of that. We will talk about regional projects, but on a safety plan that Bryn highlighted for you, when that comes out, we're going to turn it over to the town of Prescott Valley. There will be some regional projects we move forward with, but you're going to have hundreds of thousand dollars' worth of data, information for you to make your decision, to make your priorities, to justify what is safety issues, where is growth, we're going to provide that to you, so just know that you receive an incredible benefit as we all work together. So, Mr. Mayor, with that said, I'm happy to take questions or comments from you and your council.
Thank you, sir. I just want to just start with, oftentimes, there's, there's instances where a government or a town will pay money to something, and they don't really realize what they're getting out of it. You, in a short fifteen minutes, have clearly outlined what your value is to not only Prescott Valley, but to our region, so you and your team need to be congratulated. I think every dollar that we put towards Simpo is well worth it, and the town of Prescott Valley and the residents definitely reap a benefit from that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Goodbye, Smear.
First of all, I want to thank you and your staff, and I'm glad you have a staff. It really grew, so congratulations and, and welcome, ladies. And I want to thank our mayor for serving as the chair in the last two years, because a lot of things happened the last two years under his regime. So I have a couple of questions, Vinnie. I thought we were getting another chunk of funding from Mr. Wynn, or between where it stopped, at Little Giler to Stone Ridge.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor Hunt, thank you very much. Yes, you are. There was two years of funding that Representative Wynn worked, I grouped it up in the, in the slide. I believe the initial one, and Gilbert might know better than I, I think the last shot of money was one point six million, and prior to that, I think it was just a little over, I think it was four and a half million. So the slide that I illustrated was essentially two years of funding, even though I probably illustrated it like one year of funding, but there is more money in there.
So do we know that, know the status of that construction?
He asks me that every time I see him, and sometimes I attempt to dodge him. That's, that's an ADOT question, the times that I have chatted with ADOT, they are moving forward, and I don't know if Gilbert has heard something more than I have, but that's the answer I keep getting from ADOT.
Yeah, Mr. Gallego, it's still on, on target for late spring of this year, is what ADOT's estimating, so that can change, state priorities do change, but at this point, they've got the funding lined up and should be ready to go.
Great. And then, Vinnie, State Route sixty-nine median and acceleration lane extension, where is that?
That's going to be located in front of Costco, that's the HSIP project on there, is that correct, on that graphic?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one of the regional projects that we identified. So, you know, Lindsay referenced Mayor, Vice Mayor Hunt, the fifteen-mile corridor, we all recognize there's forty-five thousand cars a day, there's a lot happening on there, and we're trying to take one bite of the apple as best we can. So some of you might be familiar, that Simpo's taken the lead to do the widening from the top of the hill, if you will, at Walmart In-N-Out towards Prescott, there's going to be a widening for one mile there and a median, so this is on the, the other side of the hill coming towards you, that some more safety improvements would be done, so a median and a turn lane is where that improvement would be happening.
Great, and two more, one comment, one more question. So I thought I heard Lindsay say twelve hundred, but this is twenty-five hundred for Diamond Valley, or for Yavapai Hills and Storm Ranch.
Yeah, thank you for asking for that clarification, Vice Mayor Hunt. So the, the numbers that exist in there, there's a thirteen hundred number that we used yesterday at the County Board of Supervisors of homes that exist within Diamond Valley, and then, if you will, the twelve hundred is to be built, and there is an approved plat by the city of Prescott within, within Yavapai Hills. Again, right now, it's, it's barren land, but it's, it's been approved for a thousand homes, and then Storm Ranch is right near the new jail at the intersection of Prescott Lakes Parkway and Sun Dog Connector, that's another two hundred homes. So those are twelve hundred homes that have already been approved to be built at, at some point, if you will.
And then, finally, this resilient regional transportation network and critical congestion relief on sixty-nine, so that means we score extra points when we submit.
Correct. Yes, Vice Mayor Hunt, this new federal infrastructure bill, it's a five-year infrastructure bill, some of you might have heard a little bit about it. One of the major points that people are scoring, and when I say points, awards of money, is some of those additional terminology and efforts, resiliency being very high on the list, wildlife, multimodal, bike, pedestrian transit, there are some things that we haven't seen in the last few infrastructure bills that have brought additional dollars, so that's exactly what Lindsay was highlighting, we want to go after those dollars, and we want to make it as appealing in our application as we can, so those are some key things.
Okay, so one more, sorry, it's a comment. So I am so excited that you've been working, and I know Kel, too, with our legislators to get the money to widen Glassford Hill, because I get so many questions about why we can't put a sidewalk next to those two lanes, and I explain, because there's supposed to be six lanes, and then we'll get curb gutter and sidewalk, and that's what this project is. So as soon as you get a bill number, can you email us so we know, and I will start calling them?
Which I appreciate it, Vice Mayor Hunt, like I said a few moments ago, he's working on it as we speak. I will say, and it, it might get a little complicated in weeks to come, because we're going to run parallel bills, and I don't want to get into the details of that, but the reason I want to mention that to you right now is, one of the numbers that I've given our leadership includes some additional dollars above what we were asking, in order for you to do exactly what was just referenced, and that's add multimodal aspects to a sidewalk and some additional facilities that will benefit the area.
Because we can do a whole campaign about how our residents can sign up to do the thumbs up and the thumbs down on the bill, like we did on the illegal fentanyl bill.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Vinnie, thank you so much for your presentation and for all the valuable information that you've given us. One of the questions I have, being the alternate on the Simpo committee, I have listened to Mark Kelly's, Senator Kelly's staff make presentations, and this one item here, I was curious if you could elaborate on, that Simpo has been apportioned four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a design concept report of SR eighty-nine A between SR eighty-nine and Glassford Hill Road. Is that going to include the, what is already there as far as the, the design concept that we have, or is it going to be something new, is there going to be another bridge, is it going to be a road that will extend to Chino Valley, what are we looking at there?
Yeah, great, great question, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Dickinson, and I do appreciate your ongoing support and participation in all things Simpo. With that said, to elaborate a little bit further, so one of the studies that Lindsay mentioned was our regional transportation plan. Again, what that plan does, and I, I won't go too far into the weeds on this, but is it takes your general plan, it takes the county, the other cities, the towns, and we look at what is your development, what is your growth, all that to say, in our regional transportation plan, we've prioritized, again, we is the, the bigger regional we, is that eighty-nine- the bigger regional we, is that 89A needs to, to grow. You know, it needs to, needs to expand, if you will. So that, that is where the priority came from. So currently, you have two lanes in both directions. What the recommendation is, that you would ultimately have three lanes in both directions, primarily the section of 89A between 89 and Glassford, realizing the development that is projected, again, for the town of Prescott Valley, Prescott and surrounding areas. So as you might guess, there's many steps to ultimate construction. Highway 69 in front of Lowe's that we were just talking about a minute ago, when all was said and done, when all is said and done, it will have taken 10 years and $13 million, of which many different checks and, and points need to be accomplished. All that to say, that one of the steps to widening Highway 89A is something called a design concept report. What that will do is it'll start giving the very specifics. It's the thing just before the actual design, so it'll look at everything you're talking about. What is the land adjacent situation? What exists within the right of way? What is the ultimate cost of this? So what does that look like? What is the wildlife situation? Are there other elements to take into consideration? You referenced bridge and other things. All of that, all of that will be very specifically spelled out in the design concept report, very similar to what Lindsay referenced in the Sun Dog Connector report. So I hope that helps to answer the question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Mr. Caio?
Sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Rodriguez. Welcome, sir.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to provide you with a brief update with, for transit. So we've completed our 15 weeks, our first 15 weeks of our transit service, and so I just want to provide you some data regarding average trips per week, trips per day, trip purposes, and, and a little bit more. So here we have 2,600, a little over 2,600 trips since, since inception, with 255 unique users. You can see the orange line there being the average days, or average trips per day, and then the blue line is, is the exact trips per week for that full 15 weeks. So definitely, we're looking at a progressing linear, or a linear progression. And here we have some trip purposes. This was a little surprising, but very good, very good statistics. As one of the, one of the goals that we had from the Simpo's phased transit plan was for trips to be utilized for employment. And here we see that we have the 30% for employment, which, which exceeded our expectations. Here you have 23% for shopping, recreation, medical and education, or about 10 to, excuse me, almost 20%, 20% for those, and then other, such as paying utilities, going to the bank. A lot of those onesie-twosie type trips are in the other category. And then for demographics, here we have a 61% of ambulatory, non-senior ambulatory, meaning that people are able to walk for themselves, don't need any assistance to board the vehicles. The next biggest demographic is ambulatory senior. So again, going back to our goals that we initially had from the phased transit plan was for greater mobility for this category of seniors. And here we have wheelchair for both seniors and non-seniors, about 6%. Here's kind of a good map of, of the most frequented pickup locations. We have Long Mesa, Robert Road area as one of the top areas, the Civic area as well, Safeway Plaza, Dignity Health, YRMC area, and Castle Canyon Mesa, and a few others, as you can see here. As for the frequented drop-off locations, you have Safeway Plaza, Dignity Health again, businesses just south of Highway 69, Fry's and Civic Center. And also, you know, as, as, as well as, you know, we have all the quantitative data, but we also want to provide you with some quality. So here's some rider comments of, of some of the riders. From William, you have great employees, you are a blessing. Barbara's saying, I appreciate the service Yavoline offers. Dispatch is always professional, and the drivers are great. Elijah mentioned, I use a Yavoline to get to work every day and have not been late one time using the service. Jan said, before Yavoline, I didn't have an affordable way to get around, and now I do. Eileen said, you provide a terrific service to the community. Cheryl mentioned, you're always on time, and we feel completely safe every time we ride. So, and, and obviously, I'm, I'm always providing you with, with the good. Sometimes we have to provide you with, with the areas of improvement or the opportunities that we have. The software has been very good, yet we have some, some hurdles that we need to cross. We need to improve our notifications from the app, as well as store credit card information. Right now, you're going to have to input the credit card information, running into some bugs there. Recurring trips and the geo-coding of some addresses. I think it's just utilizing different versions of maps, and, and we're experiencing some, some issues there. Also, we've, we're trying to educate the public on, on more information as it regards to how to use the service. So those are the, the items, and that's, that's it really, for my transit update. Any questions?
Sorry, I just have one quick question, is what's the capacity at right now? What would be the most that it can handle?
So our capacity is 60.
60, so 60 trips a day?
60 trips per day.
Oh.
So I'll be requesting a contract amendment here at the end of the month.
Gotcha. And then, can you explain maybe how we went, we did quite a big jump in the last four weeks? What do you think that contributes to?
That we did. I think a lot of people are relying on the system, and a lot of people have become more acquainted with the system. We, we did conduct a couple of marketing campaigns.
Great.
Yep.
Anything else for Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the data for your pie, pie charts, is that, was that collected via voluntary survey, or where did that data come from?
Yeah, yeah, so as part of the microtransit solution, the software solution, it's data collected via the app and then via the call center. So the call center has all that information.
So there could have been some people who rode, who weren't comfortable giving that information, correct?
Um.
Pretty much, you have it all?
We pretty much had it all.
Okay.
Yeah. So it should be fairly close to, to exact.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilman?
Yes?
Thank you for your presentation. I have another comment to add to your rider, who is delighted with the service. He usually rides his bike, and he was, has been using it very frequently over the last, as you indicated, the last month, especially during the holidays, for all the different things that we've had going on. And he commented to me that one thing was, he was excited about was that he was now being considered a senior, and he only had to spend $1 per ride.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, you are to be congratulated. I know we had a little, couple little bumps, but you powered through them, and you made this happen. And I got a wonderful comment yesterday from Allison Lenick, who is the CCJ director. And she said that one of her clients in Prescott Valley rides Yavoline as far as they can go, and then takes Lyft the rest of the way downtown to Prescott, and it's saving her money, and she was just raving about it. So thank you for everything you're doing for our residents, it's so important.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, water policy update, Mr. Davidson, I believe you're kicking it off.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. All right, so I want to start off with a little bit of introductions at the stage, and we have a number of team members that are going to be contributing to some of the meat of this presentation. And so I'll introduce them real quick. Diane Masmanian, who's going to be talking about some of our survey results, Tracy Lund, who's our water resources coordinator, and John Mundelow, formerly a member of, of our town team, but making cameo appearances to help with some historic components. As you know, water is one of the most important responsibilities that we have in local government management. It's the lifeblood of, not human life, but it's the lifeblood of our communities, so without it, you can't have a community. And this town, and leadership of council and staff and our community have valued our water resources for, for decades. And so this presentation, this discussion that we're going to be having, is really building upon the past, but it's really beginning to define kind of a new direction, some new elements, and new planning and thinking that are all coming in together. And so we want to present at a very high level, this is going to be a 40,000-foot view of a number of different moving parts and pieces. You are more than welcome, if you want to dive into, to specifics, but just, this is, again, at a 40,000-foot view. We are going to have several additional follow-up study sessions that are going to dive deeper into specifics as it relates to water policy and various water projects that we have. I wanted to kind of, again, get, get our thinking centered around process, and I think that's very important. Water is a, can be a topic in a community, in a state, our state, obviously, it's on the front page of every newspaper in, in the state, can be a very emotional, it can, it can drive a lot of reaction. The more that we in government leadership positions are, you know, thinking about that long-term, that cycle, that continuous improvement cycle, I wanted to kind of frame it as that, that everything that we do, it's about that initial planning and assessment, so thinking through all of the variables. And sometimes that takes a long time. We just heard from Simpo, as they talk about transportation projects, water is even more complicated than, than transportation projects sometimes. Lot more legal issues and, and ownership issues related to water. And so that planning and assessment is absolutely critical to think through those things. The second component is, once you have a plan, it's then you've got to implement. And there will be a number of items that we'll highlight tonight, that are already on their way to an implementation stage, that you've approved in the past, and others that will be moving towards that once we present it formally to council. And then that final piece, before it cycles all the way back again, is that evaluation and monitoring. And this is really about a culture. We want to plan, we want to implement smartly, and then we want to constantly evaluate and tweak and make adjustments, so they're always, you know, on target with where we need to be with our community. This is what has guided us as a team over this past year, is we have literally debated, discussed, and analyzed, and challenged one another about, you know, what do we have? What don't we have? Where can we go? Where can't we go, as it relates to overall water resources? So I think this is very important, as we kind of set that stage for today's discussion and beyond. So our, our study session, again, what we're going to be looking at is 40,000-foot view, specifically to ensure our water security and economic health. And those go hand in hand. So we'll, we'll be talking about that, you'll see that evident in, in a number of the points that we're going to be making today. We're also going to be highlighting, this past year, we went through, the council approved a whole process to engage the community. There were focus groups and extensive community-wide survey, and so we'll be hearing about a high level of some of those, the results. And then we'll be talking about our overall kind of conservation and water resources management strategy, and we'll be getting into some specific projects. And then ultimately, if you have any questions, we are prepared to, to answer at the end. If there's any direction, again, additional discussion that you want to have, we can certainly have that. I want to really make sure that we focus in on this particular slide, because this is, this is what sets the stage. This is what I would call kind of our water values. And we, we probably have not always articulated very well what it is Prescott Valley's trying to drive at with its overall water management. Again, as I said, and I can't say it enough, you know, water, a lot of, there's a lot of different thoughts and opinions and views about water, and, not just locally, but, you know, across the state. And so having a set of core values that help guide us, and what we're driving at, to make sure that we are doing the best by our community, these three things really kind of hit at that. And that first one is balance our aquifer. I stress "our" aquifer. It's not just PVs, it's the whole, it's the whole region's aquifer. And by balance, we, you know, there's a term that's been historically used, and it's called safe yield. Most people, most, I talk to neighbors and friends, you, you know, I start, talk government speak, and they just kind of glaze over. Safe yield is probably one of those terms that people are like, I have no idea what you're talking about. What it is, at the heart of it, is basically a gallon in and a gallon out. So if we take a gallon of water out of our aquifer, we need to find somehow, some way to put a gallon back into the aquifer. And we, right now, are out of balance with our aquifer, and we'll have some additional slides that, that point that out, but it's very critical that we are, again, thinking long-term, how do we protect, how do we manage our overall water resources that's contained within the aquifer? The second value component is secure our economy. You know, a lot of people will say, well, you know, the way to solve this problem is just stop all the growth, stop, stop doing anything that's, that's going to, you know, add one more spigot to, to the line. And it's much more complicated than that. In order to solve the long-term challenges that we have, and to make sure that we have a viable, healthy economy for the future, we have to make sure we've got the right water resources to be able to add additional businesses. This is a place in our state that's beautiful. All of us moved here because we were attracted to what it had to offer. And just like us, there's others that come and visit, you know, whether it be Prescott, Prescott Valley for the first time, and they fall in love with this place. And so we want to make sure that we can be that place, that you can raise a family, that you can come and visit and have a great time, that you can retire here and have a safe, healthy community to, to live in. So that securing our economy cannot be understated. It's, it's very important. Without money, without revenue coming in, we cannot do all of the things that we need to do, and that's, again, tied back to making sure we have a healthy water portfolio. And then the third component, and I think this is, again, this is near and dear to all of our hearts, this is protecting our quality of life. I can't tell you, and I know all of you who, you know, as, as elected officials out in the community and talking with people, how many times people say, we, we love living here, we love our quality of life, we love the open space, we love the antelope, we love getting out on the trails. Let's not mess that up, right? This is, we, we need to do everything we can to continue to protect this, what makes this a great small-town feel. It, you know, certainly has that small-town feel, but again, we want to make sure we have the great amenities, that economic, you know, development, that, again, helps this to be just an incredible place to live, raise a family, and retire. So these three things, balance our aquifer, secure our economy, and protect our quality of life, that sets the stage for everything that we're talking about here today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Lund, who is going to begin to dive into some of the more detail.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Ms. Lund.
Thank you for having me, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Next slide, please. Or do I need to? Okay, I'm sorry. Last time I was up here, I did that, and we jumped all over the place. So this, what you see here is, to the left, a graph, talking about total user pumping since 1965. And that shows that while modern-day pumping is consistent with what has been, what was occurring in the 1960s, and then again in the 1980s and 90s, pumping does remain higher than what is considered to be sustainable by ADWR. Those numbers there, the 7,000 to 10,000 acre feet, are coming from ADWR's groundwater flow model studies. flow model studies. And as you can see, Prescott Valley's contribution to all users in the AMA is shown there in red. So we are contributing to what, what is, you know, we're actively mining groundwater. And we need to be proactive on how we try to address that. Overall, on average throughout the AMA, water levels are dropping by about a foot a year. There are areas where water levels are increasing, there are areas where water levels are decreasing, so it averages out to about a year, a foot per year. Overall, I really do think that gallon in, gallon out is a really good approach, a good way to think about this, but we do have a lot of things that we can bring to our water strategy. It needs to be multifaceted so that we can address all of the issues as well as we can. One of our recent initiatives was to check in with our constituents to see what we need to do to be able to communicate better about water and both water levels, water quality, just water overall here, and how important it is to us in the AMA. So I'd like to introduce Diane Masmanian, who was able to do some studies for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're kind of excited to share with this information with you regarding our water education and stewardship. What we have here is a three-phase effort, starting with the SWAT, which we did about a year ago, if you remember, with the town-elected officials. And we got consensus on what we felt were strong, the strengths, the weaknesses, any opportunities that were available here. We also had the community focus groups and the community survey. And what we found is that this community survey and the focus groups will help us establish a benchmark for education planning in the future, and it will support water Part two of this plan was the community focus groups, and it also gave us some kind of highlight into the community sources, their information on water. There was confusion over where they could get information, and so that's one of the things we discovered. We found that population growth was a concern, and they were also interested in water conservation, but they were unaware of the town's efforts in the recent years. So all of these were considered critical, considered regional cooperation critical, and they did not understand the regulatory environment. Moving into part three is where we developed the community survey. And this was conducted online in September, October of this past year, and it helped us to find out what the entire community felt about water conservation and the state regulatory environment, and any kind of needs in terms of how they wanted to get information on water, that type of thing. And we had a very good response. We had over 1,400 respondents that responded to the survey, and with a 95% confidence level, we have a margin error of about plus or minus 3%, so it's very solid, solid results. The top three concerns were the population growth, drought, and the running out of water. We also found that they had a lack of understanding about the role of the town versus ADWR. So they, I think they gave more credit to the town in terms of what they can do and place probably some of the blame there, too. The majority were very supportive of conservation, but they really had no clue about what, what the town's efforts were. And this was very, very, it came out not only in the survey, but in the focus groups. They had no idea. And they tried, the three trusted areas for this water information were the ADWR, the Town News, and the Town Website. So that's where they're looking for this information in terms of, you know, what's going on with their water. And they prefer to receive information if it's coming to them via email. Overwhelmingly, a large share of the people said, "I want to email," or "I want to find it in the website or on the Town News." Some other interesting information is that over 80% of the respondents really had a trust in the information the town provides. They were, you know, it was a good response to that. The majority of them have lived in Prescott Valley. Of the respondents that we got in the survey, a large share were within the past five years, have moved here in the past five years. And as expected, we had a lot of older people that responded to the survey, and a great share were 65 years or older. And the majority of the respondents themselves somewhat felt they were somewhat knowledgeable about the water supply, which was a, you know, surprising. Two-thirds felt that there was somewhat, they had somewhat an idea, but 26% had no clue, they just didn't. So what can we conclude from all this? Respondents are seeking information from the Town News and the Prescott Valley website. They are also, also should be getting information on groundwater from the state agencies, they're looking for it, they don't know how to get it. So if there's a way the town can facilitate that, too, to make that information more readily available to them, I think that would be a wonderful improvement. And as we said earlier, they were unaware of our town's conservation measures, and the community does support regional cooperation, and they not only support it, they expect it. So what are our next steps? This would take us into the fourth phase, and that would be the development of a complete outreach and education plan. And that can help with the down-the-line planning on water conservation. Excuse me. Other questions?
Is Mr. Mundelow up? Is that who's next?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's nice to be back. Good to see you all again.
Last time, I need to remind you, sir, the last time you were here, you were counting down the minutes to when you were retired.
You know, I believe it was after 5:00 PM on my retirement date, and I was still here.
So I'm just, I'm just.
But I didn't want to make anything.
Just throwing that out there.
Yeah. So town manager drags me out of the wilderness every once in a while for some historical context, and I think that's what I'm here for tonight. As you saw from Diane's presentation, some confusion about, or misunderstanding about the town's past water conservation programs and perhaps where we need to head with those programs now. So, and I think it's important in the context of this, to understand that our community has changed. You know, 20 years ago, when we were just getting into the water business, I guess 22 years ago, you know, this is relatively a small town. I mean, the sit-down restaurant was Denny's. Glastonbury Hill Road was a two-lane road, barely used, so it was a very different community. We did not have a commercial base really to speak of, and people had a different attitude towards water conservation. And really, the attitude was, "Well, you go do what you have to do, town, and let us go about our lives." So when we really got into water conservation programs, really started with what we called the Third Management Period. And for those who are, you know, uncomfortable with government speak, Gilbert, that is a regulatory program that the Arizona Department of Water Resources sets forward according to state statutes. So this is law, and they set out essentially standards for towns' water providers to follow. And I guess, you know, you get fined or put in trouble somehow or another if you don't follow them, so they are compliance-driven. When we started the Third Management Plan, which began in the year 2000, so 23 years ago, it started with this program called the GPCD program, the gallons per capita day. So whatever you pump out of the ground as a water provider, divide that by your total population served, and that's your gallons per person per day. And that really describes the water that's used at your home and throughout the communities to support your needs, whether it's a government center, or a town park, or a shopping center, something like that. And the standard then was 123 GPCD gallons per person per day, and then by the end of that management period, that tenure period, we were supposed to be down to 121 gallons per person per day. And so the idea was that the town goes and does conservation, however it has to do it, and that those conservation requirements really aren't loaded on the individual per se. So there's no really regulatory environment that comes from the town to the individual, but it's from the state to the town. So we were well over the 123 standard that was set, and in 2005, the town was the first in the area to set the tiered rates program. That had a huge impact, I'll show that on a slide coming up. So this tiered water rates really drove down water use per person per day. Had that remained the standard, I think we would be, you know, still doing that, but it also speaks to a community that we had then, a more working-class cohort of people. And so seeing your rates go up for additional gallons used beyond kind of a base amount really impacted people's bottom line, and they really responded to that. I think we can see now that that's not as big of an impact as it used to be. However, in 2008, everything changed. That GPCD program got thrown out, got tossed out by a lawsuit, the state legislature had to come up with a new program, and they came up with something called the Modified Non-Percapita Conservation Program. So instead of having kind of a numerical standard to reach, we had to go to best management practices. And we had to justify these best management practices. So they came up with a menu, we had to select from a menu of these best management practices for water conservation, and we had to justify which of those practices we wanted to adopt. In other words, we had to show the Department of Water Resources that what we were going to do for water conservation made sense for our community. So to justify that, and I've heard this criticism numerous times, that the town does not have a water conservation plan. In fact, we do. In 2008, we commissioned an outside group to develop a water conservation study for us that helped us justify the programs that we were going to select with the non-GPC program. Anyway, long story short, that's our plan, and we've been on that plan since that was produced. What that study came out with is that tiered rates, of course, this is 2008, are indeed, or at least were indeed, the best and most effective tool. Outreach and education, as you see, was important. Broad use of technology, so in other words, the technology that helps the broader group of customers rather than just select groups. And it did show that rebates can complement overall water conservation, but we've never adopted rebates within the town of Prescott Valley. They were not the most effective use of the conservation dollars. All these programs cost money. You know, over the many years that I've been at this role, I've been called many, many times by people asking if the town had a water rebate program, either rebate toilets or, you know, washers and dryers. And I would always ask, "Well, what are you doing?" They said, "Well, we remodeled our house, and we'd like to get rebates for having high-efficiency toilets." I said, "Well, would you not have put in the high-efficiency toilets if you had known we didn't have a rebate program?" And the answer is always "no." That, in other words, it did not influence their decision. So again, I don't know that that's the best use. So 10 years go by during the Third Management Period, and then we enter the Fourth Management Period. That's when the non-per-capita program goes into full effect. We had to justify our programs. We adopted actually six or seven programs from the list. We were required to adopt five. So I won't go into those, but basically, we went through those programs over the past decade. I also want to point out the recent adoption of the Watersmart Portal, which is a technological advancement that applies, you know, everybody can take advantage of that. And it's something I think the town really needs to push in the future, and that allows everybody to see their water use in near real-time on a phone or whatever. So this graph goes back to 2000, just a year after the town got into the water business, and it shows those gallons per capita per day. And right about 2005, when the tiered rates were adopted, we started seeing a huge decrease in water use. We went up a little bit in 2006 and '07, but that was because of, that was just a tremendous construction year. All these things were being built, and most of that increase was used for construction water. But as you can see, since maybe 2010 or so, we've been at a pretty steady, about 100 gallons per person per day. You know, I think you could look at that and say, "Well, where's our progress?" But please understand also that our water use characteristics in the town have changed tremendously over that decade with the increase of, you know, commercialization, new town parks, you know, many new facilities. In other words, the community has grown into a full-service community where it wasn't then. So I think holding the line was actually a pretty good accomplishment. So going forward, so again, we're constrained by law on what we do. So the next step is the Fifth Management Period, which goes into effect in 2025, and that regulatory program by the Department of Water Resources is upping the game. So the town will have to go much further with water conservation programs to meet minimum compliance with that program, so be ready to adopt a lot more programs and justify them. The Community Water Survey that Ms. Masmanian just presented will influence those conservation efforts, right? Whereas in the past, our community members didn't really want to be too involved with it. I think in the current state and what we're seeing from the survey, people want to be involved. They want to kind of roll up their sleeves and be part of the water conservation efforts. So we need programs that more directly involve folks. And it's also important to understand that costs are involved with every one of these programs, not only an outright, you know, direct cost for paying for certain efforts, whether it's staff or providing information, but it also affects the revenue side. So, you know, the water system runs as an enterprise fund. It pays for itself and only pays for itself, but as you sell less water, guess what? Eventually start losing enough money to, you know, keep things, maintain the pipes and the pumps and that sort of thing. So that all has to be considered. In other words, it's a balancing act. So balancing all these things, you know, the, basically the outcome of my presentation is, the next step is update that water conservation study, and that study needs to balance all these different things and help the community go into its next strategy. So I think... So I think with those comments, Tracy's on the finish hook.
Thank you, sir.
So with all of that information in mind, given that this is meant to be a 40,000-foot overview, as I guess I'm already getting confirmation from the mayor, there's a lot on this slide, and that is the point. We're doing a lot of stuff. We've got a lot of things on the plate currently. We're thinking about a lot of things where we want to go moving forward. So I just want to do like a quick breeze-through on a couple of these things for you. We're going to be talking about a few things. This is also meant to be a teaser for February, the next study session we have on this topic. The rate and fee update, the master drainage and recharge plan. And we're going to be talking a little bit about the general plan implementation with regards to water resources as well. We're doing a lot of things, though, with plans and studies and strategies. So lots of stuff on our docket. Partnerships. Man, we have some great partners around, and we're doing some really great work with them. You know, I might be biased. I'm the tack chair for the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. We're doing some great work there, trying to further our reuse of, you know, try to slow down the stormwater, doing some great work there. We've had some initial good luck with some, talking to the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension. So so many things. Prescott and Salt River Project, obviously, Big Chino, we're continuing work on that. We'll give you updates on that as well. Policies, we're looking at policies. We're having a lot of great discussions on our existing water-based policies, talking about what we can do for potential policies. Maybe do, you know, some cross-seeding with, for instance, that second-to-last-point designation, dedication of open space and conservation of lands. That does have water resource implications as well. We're looking at, you know, how do we maybe secure more effluent? What do we do as far as maybe dedicating a portion of our effluent to permanent recharge, if possible? We're looking at a lot of different things. And project-wise, right off the bat, we were able to talk to ADWR about possibly moving our discharge points for the Aguafria Recharge Project. So there's a permitting process that we're going through right now, making the models work, getting that situated. Treatment for PFAS, obviously, you all know about the PFAS issues for both water wells and for our wastewater plant. So that way, we can make sure to protect our aquifer and protect our citizens with their drinking water as well. And, I mean, it's all, you know, it all plays together, really. It really does. With that, Gilbert?
All right, Mayor and Council. I did want to just highlight real quick on, we have the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, and I just want to call that out real quick. In your staff packet, there were some attachments, and it had an outline of different projects. Just wanted to give the context for that. This past legislative session, the legislatures, you know, were grappling with statewide water issues, wanted to come up with a way to help infuse needed capital dollars to build water infrastructure projects throughout the state. So there's water importation projects, so trying to find water from outside of the state to bring into Arizona. And then there are projects that could be located across the whole state, and in particular, in rural areas, that don't have a huge amount of financial resources. So this new, it's called WIFA, Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. There has been a WIFA, they should have come up with a new government acronym than the same one. So there's the original one that many cities have gone to and borrowed against for various water sewer projects. This is kind of similar. So it has a new board. One of the board members had reached out to us to say, "Hey, I want to make sure that we try to bring as many dollars back to our region as possible. Can you quickly put together a list of all the historic projects, all the things that are out there that could potentially be funded?" So a draft was put together. We shared that with Prescott, and we're now in a dialogue with WIFA, this board, and with Prescott. We'll be sitting down with them to kind of work through it. There is no formal process at this point. This was just preliminary in terms of one of the board members wanting to make sure that he represented our region appropriately. So this is going to be a long-term thing, and I just want to make sure that you knew what that was, and that we'll continue to have conversations. And if there's opportunities, whether there will be small pots of grant funds, most likely, there'll be low-interest loan opportunities, which is similar to what the existing WIFA board is. And so we'll keep you apprised as to those opportunities going forward. All right, our last slide, and then we'll open up for any discussion and questions. As we, you know, I led off with, and Ms. Lund had also reiterated, is this is a series of discussions. So this was to kind of whet your appetite of all the different things that we've been working on over the past number of months. Next month, we want to drill down into those projects. So we'll have some of our consultants here to provide an update on the recharge, the drainage and recharge project. I think on that, the recharge component is very exciting. This is going to be opportunities where we can actually try to hopefully slow down some of our stormwater and get it back into our aquifer. We'll be also talking about where we are with our rate review, and we'll have a number of other items on there as well. And then in a few months from now, we will be coming back and having a conversation about very specific policies. And those will, they get complicated. There's, you know, they will have impacts on individuals, and so we'll want to really weigh in and make sure that you guys understand the nuances with them and as we, you know, try to finalize wording for particular policies. And then ultimately, many of these things that we are talking about will require council to actually adopt things, so that whether by a resolution or ordinance, if we're changing any of our code types of things. So that, again, will continue on into the months ahead. And then I end with, again, that same, you know, model of just, we spend the time to plan, to think, to talk through, to analyze, you know, make sure we have our data and our facts. And then we, you know, adopt a course, we implement, but we never stop. Once we've implemented something, we are always in that mindset of, how are we doing? What's the data look like? Do we need to take something back to council and tweak? Do we need to go back to the public and have a broader conversation? So this is very important. This is going to be a cycle that we never end with. For you guys and for the public that are watching, we are going to be in this mindset of constantly analyzing, looking at best practices, and how do we make sure that, again, back to our values that we talked about, how do we protect our quality life? How do we make sure we have a viable, good economy? And then how do we make sure we protect our aquifer? With that, I'll open up to any questions.
Mr. Davidson, I appreciate today. Like you said, it was kind of to whet our appetite. No pun intended there. I like that.
I meant it.
But this is a great opportunity. This is something that's never been done here in Prescott Valley. We're actually setting up a plan to implement, to hopefully get us to safe yield. We're not relying on hope or just prayer. We're actually doing something proactively to get us there. So that is exciting for our residents. The next few months are going to be exciting. There's going to be a lot of information coming forward. And then the 40,000-foot view of this is important. So hopefully, the residents recognize the hard work of the team and what's going into this, because this is, like I said, nothing that's been done before here in Prescott Valley. So it's exciting.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, you kind of triggered something in my mind. When we talk about, you know, safe yield and that gallon in, gallon out, you know, this isn't a strategy just built on build a pipeline to a ranch that we acquired with Prescott 20-some years ago, and that solves our problem. That doesn't solve our problem. That's a piece of the overall conversation that we need to be having. This is very comprehensive. This is from personal behavior at a home, to a business, to our planning that we do as a community. It's very broad, and it all goes into how do we, again, achieve that ultimate goal of protecting our aquifer?
Yes, sir. The vice mayor will be speaking next, and she's actually going to be handling the rest of the meeting. I have to leave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gilbert, I think something, and I want to thank our consultants that did this survey. I appreciate your attention to detail and your patience with our residents and the information that you've provided. So thank you both. One of the telling comments on that survey was lack of knowledge on the town's efforts. So no matter how many times we put information out, and we've been having a monthly article in the newsletter, and I want to continue to do that, people still don't understand it. And so we can't educate these folks enough. I look forward to the next phase of the study that talked about getting the information out, and I complete outreach and education plan. So I don't know if these current consultants are doing it, or if we're going to send that out, but I'm really looking forward to that part. I am going to ask our council if they have questions and start with our Chair of the Upper Verde Watershed, Councilwoman Heppert-Lee. And thank you for your efforts there.
Thank you. So this is so broad that I'm not even going to try to ask any questions because they would be way too minute. So I'm just going to hold all questions until we get into a little deeper discussions. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Mundelow for coming out of retirement once again. I drag him out on a regular basis, and I always, always appreciate his efforts. I know he had to, he played an integral role in creating the WIFA list, and I hope that he continues to let us drag him out, even if it costs more. We'll pay it. Just keep coming, please. And then I do, I just wanted to point out, I am super excited about the Aguafria River recharge changes. So I do want to just go into that a little bit. Prescott Valley has always recharged into the AMA. But by moving the recharge facility from the Aguafria to the Little Chino sub-basin, then we would also be recharging the watershed. And so two birds with one stone there, and that's really exciting. And then I also, I don't want this, we have made this a priority, Mr. Davidson, at the direction of council. I mean, he got us in that strategic planning right away, and this was a priority that rose to the top, and he has taken it and run with it. And we really appreciate that. But this is, again, this, like you said, this is not something new. We're just prioritizing it, and we're being more vocal about it. The Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition has existed for 15 years, and Prescott Valley is the fiscal agent for that organization. And it's doing greater work now than ever before. It's amazing. So this is, this isn't us switching into crisis mode. This isn't, this isn't need for panic. This is just us being responsible and continuing to move forward with good information. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Heppert-Lee. So I'm glad you pointed out that part about, you know, I hear, "Oh, Prescott Valley's never put a drop in the Little Chino," which makes it sound like we've never conserved water, which isn't true, because we are recharging into the AMA by the work that we're doing in Aguafria. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I'm glad you brought it up. You brought it up. Okay, other questions?
I had a couple of comments as well. And also, from what I understand, it's illegal for us to capture water to prevent other communities downriver from having their water source. So that is one thing that I found during the election process. I had a lot of people try to use fear-mongering to create a panic during an election, and that really bothered me. I tried to speak out about it, and my words got twisted. So I kind of wanted to just take a step back on that as well. And from what I know, I have had quite a few conversations with John Mundelow and with you as well, Gilbert. And some people have suggested to create a moratorium to stop our growth, to stop people from coming to our town because they will use water. And that's an illegal act, is it not? Only the state can create a moratorium for an area?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember, it's, we could probably talk about the legal issue of that. Yeah, it would be, there would be dire economic consequences by a municipality taking entitled property that is ready to go and say, just without some arbitrary crisis that's imposed by the state to say, "We're not going to issue any more building permits just because we don't want to." There are strategies, there's things that we can do, and we'll be talking about those things, to make sure that we have good, managed growth. I think that's really key. The other thing, and I hit on this, is when I was talking about the quality of life and why people come here, it's a beautiful place. People are going to keep coming here. So even if we and Prescott and Chino said, "We're stopping all growth," okay? They're going to, still, there's going to be, there's county areas where they're going to subdivide. And there's places in our state where subdivided communities have sprung up, and they become tens and tens of thousands of people with no municipal services, water systems that are, you know, not well put together, roadway systems that are not maintained. And so that will happen. And so what we're talking about here is how do we balance the need to continue to make sure this is an attractive, viable, great community to live in and manage that growth? And then to begin to preserve open space. And we talked, you know, about that several times, of how do we start, you know, conservation efforts and create open-space wildlife corridors? So all of that's opportunities, but yes, there would be serious consequences. And, you know, I don't know the legal mechanism of being able to just, you know, stop that. And not to mention, then it goes to that second value of our crashing the economy. You know, we value having our stores, our retail stores, and, you know, all of the trades, all the, you know, different businesses that help support this community. That could have a huge impact if we're not mindful about how we manage all of those interrelated components.
So I just wanted to say thank you for that explanation as well and to reassure the public and all of our citizens that currently, our water is really great. It's a quality product. It's, we don't have a problem that's been sort of given to us in the way that people have created the fear-mongering. I think people are panicking at this point. And that's the part that we are trying to reassure the public, that we are also working on the next 100 years of viable water. We're always doing what we can, but we can't create water at this point. I mean, we would like to. So if anybody else has answers, please come forward, work with the teams that are working on this issue so that it's not something that you think that we're not doing, because we are always working on the water. And then if you could also maybe kind of explain how we can capture the water and we recharge it? Is there a way to explain that so that water that comes into the home also has to leave the home? And it's treated, but we also don't process the water. We don't add a lot of additives like fluoride to our water. And I know you and I have had that discussion before, that we monitor the water. We have to test the water for anything that could be harmful within it, but we don't add a lot of other things to it. So I just want people to know they have a good, quality water that is delivered by the Town of Prescott Valley. So I want to say thank you to everybody who worked so hard on this, and even for what comes from our homes back to the system, and that we do recharge. And I know on capture that we are studying that as well so that we can see what we can do to add more water to our aquifer. So hopefully, someday, we will come out of the drought, but that's not a guarantee, and that's why we're working so hard on what we can do today. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schumacher. I think what you were saying, and I appreciate you bringing this up, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we can't legally stop people from developing their properties. And if we did, we would take what money we have for roads and parks and quality of life, and we would be buying people's parcels, and that would totally close down this jurisdiction. So thanks for pointing that out. I appreciate that. Other questions? Councilwoman Dickinson?
I have just a couple of comments. The Aguafria River is fascinating when you go online and review the photographs that have been taken of the river over a process of years and at different seasons. And the thing that really feeds our groundwater is snowpack and rain. And to Councilmember Schumacher's point, capturing that water from our, our stormwater, I don't know about capturing, you know, what comes from our snow, but it is, goes along with being educated, for the community to be educated. I know I was, this last week, as I was reviewing a lot of the information that you provided to us, and just out of curiosity, was reviewing a lot of these things that are online for us to research. It isn't something that we have to provide as a council or as a town. If someone is really interested in knowing about the Aguafria, they just, you know, can go and, and look at this, and, and even go in person and see what we're actually talking about. And we live in a fantastic area, beautiful state, and the Aguafria, as was mentioned earlier, does not just encompass Prescott Valley, it encompasses not only the Quad City area as well, but it goes downstream to many, many other cities and towns and areas. And something else that was brought to my attention many, many years ago, I took a tour of the wastewater management plant in Tucson, and the supervisor in charge at the time, he shared with me that one, something that we should take great concern about is what we put down our disposals, eggshells and grease from whatever, you know, when you cook a steak on the, or fry up a steak, don't pour the grease down. This will contaminate our, our water. And, and again, it's back to education. This, again, isn't something that the council needs to provide. This is common sense stuff. You know, how to get rid of, of having a food trap and getting rid of that and disposing of it in a proper way, not down the disposal that goes to our water resources. So like I said, these were just a couple of comments and things that came to mind, but it's been a wonderful presentation, and thank you so much for all your hard work, all of you. You've done a dynamic job, and it's been so informative.
No, I just wanted to thank you for this. Probably the, the most comments I get from people that I encounter is about our water supplies, so I'm looking forward to delving even deeper into it all. So thank you.
Councilwoman Leva?
Well, thank you so much for doing this in this presentation for us today, and I know it's, it's a 40,000 you? So I'm looking forward to knowing more about it, but I think having the intention of keeping the community informed from day one, it's really, really important, because I think that is, that is going to give everyone a peace of mind that we are being productive, that the town is being proactive, you know, on these issues. And they're not such a big deal, but that'll give our, our community the peace of mind. So having that intention is huge, and I love the three points that you make on, on things to, you know, that we're trying to accomplish here, because protect our quality of life, I think that's something that we all want. So having those three things to base this presentation and to base this project off of is great. So thank you so much.
I just have a final appreciation shout-out, and that is for Neil and you, and anybody else that worked on this investment plan, which also supports the AMA and safe yield, but it specifically has dollar amounts to help us with the PFAS contamination. And so with the speed you put this together and all of the items that are in here, this funding source is the conservation funding source from the original WIFA?
So that's, we need to still work with the WIFA, new WIFA staff
Okay.
in terms of what buckets of money will be available. There will be dollars available in the state for some of these PFAS issues. The state just announced that a few weeks ago of going out and starting to really help some of these communities. So we definitely will be looking at that. But even if, you know, if we don't have grant dollars, which means we don't have to pay it back, that, you know, WIFA is a low-interest loan opportunities. So if you have to go out on the open market, you're going to pay a lot more money. So this would be another good opportunity. If we need an infusion of cash for a capital project as we try to upgrade some of our systems and put those protections in place on the PFAS stuff, I think we'll have a number of options to, to work through.
So today, we're just receiving information, we're not giving you direction. But this letter that was dated December 20th for the PFAS, you're going to go ahead and send this, right?
Vice Mayor, so that list was already given to the board member. There is no process. So it basically was just a board member asking for, hey, what's, what's going on in your region? And so once an actual process gets created and announced by WIFA, then we'll make sure that we're, we're in tune with that. And we, we will advise the board member that's been, you know, trying to support our region, work closely with that individual.
And I can't thank you enough for your expertise and your experience in this and your contacts to get this already out, because even though we don't have specific guidelines yet, it's important to get, you know, our foot in the door here. Otherwise, this money is going to go south and to the D-SAL. So I think it's very important, and this, this proactive nature that you've done is really going to help Prescott Valley, so I can't thank you enough for that. Do we have any other questions from council?
Can I add a little bit?
Sure.
Just to, so again, on the WIFA with you saying that there's, there's no processes in place. So if it turns out that the, you know, it, it doesn't work out, it doesn't, you know, taking the WIFA money does not work out in the best interests of Prescott Valley, no harm, no foul. We just don't take it. At the very least, you wrote down our goals, which is the first step of manifestation.
Right.
So, you know, there's, there's nothing wrong with just, let's, let's just get organized about what, what we're trying to achieve and what are some numbers that it might cost to do so, so.
It's never too early. Okay, any other questions? No. So with that, I will adjourn this study session, and thank you again, everyone, for being here.